Again, when the weather supports another outdoor activity, so start in the spring, we'll do something else. I think we'll probably move over to the grass field, we said, because a lot of the kids were playing and things like that. So those community events are something that we're looking to do. That was, that one, we didn't have any fundraising at all. We realize now we could have had just a bucket if you want to put money in, you can. Otherwise, you don't have to, so we'll be doing that at future events. We've done Spirit Clear, we've done Auto Pizza fundraising night, and then we had Square One Art. So it's been kind of busy with, go here, buy this, go there. And we have one more coming up. January 21st is, we're bringing back the U of M Hockey Night. So that'll be really fun. I think if we get the support we anticipate, the kids will be able to go out down into the tunnel and eye upon the players as they go out. So that's what we're working on for that. We've also been doing some support of the Green Team and some other field trips and those type of things. It's been fun. I know the kids, my kids are certainly enjoying the field trips they're going on. So we're all ready to go to Phillips Exeter, so if anybody has an answer. Any questions on what we've been doing?
No.
Okay. For the meetings, we're trying to do a mix of virtual and in-person. The virtual, we're not trying not to take up the teacher's time, since we weren't getting the participation, you know, from the parents to really warrant having a teacher from every grade. So we're trying to do more in-person and less often. And the first one that we did at the A and S, we did, we definitely had more parents and they were engaged and they volunteered afterwards and stayed for the whole meeting. So we'll do that again. I think the next one for that is February.
Okay. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda would be the administrative update. Should we move the discussion about warrant articles?
We have certain additional warrants on here. Do you want to do that first?
Yeah, that's what we're here to talk about, right. So we're going to move the discussion of additional warrants for the FY 2024-25 ballot to the top of the administrative update to save these gentlemen time.
Molly.
Should I give everyone one of these?
I think everyone has one.
Okay.
Does everybody have this?
No.
Now it's on.
I don't think yours is on. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No.
I don't think it's, I think it's just for the...
It is.
It's on.
Yeah, these are on.
Okay. So earlier today, I made a summary to help explain what these guys are trying to achieve to do. So last time, Peter Lennon, and sorry, I forget your names.
Leon Atsalas, we'll see you next time.
Okay. Okay. Had come and talked about hiring an investment manager for the trust funds. So what I did is I went back and when I found out it was Three Bearings that was chosen, we actually have four other districts in SAU 16 that use them. So I listed them here. It's Brentwood, East Kingston, Kensington, and Newfields. Well, so the money will be invested, so there's no way to promise that the balance won't go down. However, in all four of those districts, I have not seen the balances go down. They are very conservative investments. So I took the largest, because that's probably the most comparable to Exeter, being Brentwood, and I put what they're investing. So once a year in the SAU office, we get the statement from Three Bearings. So the most recent statement received back in July had it in four different funds. They're all either short-term, investment-grade, high-quality funds or treasury bonds that are backed by the US government. So, I mean, I do feel comfortable. It is a very safe investment. Also, we reached out to attorney Gordon Graham, who's our school district attorney, to get the proposed wording language, which I put at the top. So that's how it would appear on the ballot. It's not a tax impact because the investment manager, investment management fee would be paid from the income we receive. On page two and three of what I handed out, I received this directly from Peter. This is the proposed fee structure, so probably about little, less than halfway down the first page. It says the estimate annual fee for the Exeter School District will be $3,284. They mentioned both the Cooperative and Exeter on here. And then the last page is on the back, Peter, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but had a question to answer with the town of Exeter, and these are the questions and answers from that discussion.
These are actually the questions and answers from, we red teamed it as to who would ask what questions. We have, and I think I sent it to you, but I can make that available if you think it's necessary. There's another set of questions and answers that the town finance director and the town business, town manager asked us. We sat with them and went through what we were trying to do, and they raised some questions. And I can pass, I'm more than happy to pass that down. I can tell you that we were approved by a 5-0 vote. These are the questions from Russ Dean and from Corey Stevens, that Three Bearings answered for us. We were approved just on the 4th of December by a 5-0 vote by the select board. And as part of that process, both Russ Dean and Corey Stevens agreed that this was a sound proposal and that we had done our homework. I've got the, I've got the draft minutes. If you want me to pass that down, I'll be happy to do that as well. But, so, I apologize if we gave you too many questions and answers, but we were trying to make sure that we covered everything that we could think of and hopefully that you might want answered.
So you said something about the fee is getting paid out from the funds, from our investment?
From the income.
So if we make no, if we don't make anything, then there's no fee paid?
Technically, that's correct. But the investments that we're going to make in certain accounts or in certain funds, or even in the separate large cap equities, a small part of our portfolio, are going to be in pretty conservative companies. And as far as the 15% that we think is going to go into the large cap equities, even no matter what the stocks have done in terms of their prices over the last 20 years, they've continued to pay dividends. So the, from our point of view, there's a very small possibility that there would be no income at all to pay the fees. But let me defer that to David Mays, who's the president and chief investment officer from Three Bearings, who's here.
Yeah. So the rest of the portfolio is in income generating vehicles, so short-term treasury bonds and Z-bills and investment-free corporate bonds. So current yields on those are going to be about 4%. So our fee is half of that percent annually. And those bonds are never going to go to zero income. So I can't conceive of there being a zero income scenario.
Okay.
Certainly could have negative total return, so don't confuse them too. But zero income, to me, is just not a possibility.
Okay. And then another question I had was, how does this relationship work with our school district? Are you the liaison, like, working with?
Well, I would, right. I mean, the Three Bearings will work for the trustees of the trust funds.
Okay.
And we'll have a contract with them and an engagement letter, if you will.
Right.
But going forward, and I haven't talked this out with Molly yet, but as we've done in the past, as we've gone through the process of changing our investment policy, we've sent drafts of certain items to Molly and to the town finance director and manager. So at a minimum, we'll be inviting Molly, or whomever she designates, to our quarterly performance report meetings.
Okay.
And she's invited to any of our trustee meetings. They're all public meetings. And in between the quarterly meetings, you know, I can make a point of reaching out to Molly, or she can make a point of reaching out to me with any questions. And it won't be one of these things where we say, no, sorry, we can't, we can't answer it, or wait till the quarterly. We'll get an answer. One of the reasons we hire Three Bearings, or we want to hire Three Bearings if the voters approve, is that we believe they're very responsive. They have been throughout this process, including the interview process that we had with them and three other investment advisor candidates. So if Molly has questions and you have questions, we'll do our best to get them answered.
Okay.
And quickly.
So to answer your question on the SAU involvement, we annual, well, we get periodic updates from the trustees, but annually, we get the report from Three Bearings. And so that usually happens in the summertime. So we would review, we can see what's being invested. It's really up to the trustee of trust funds on how it's invested and what they're investing in. We just get the statements to show what our balance is.
Okay. So you do that oversight, like you...
And we send monthly reports to Kristin Levesque, your accountant.
Okay.
Which lists all of the trust funds, not just the school or the cooperative or just the Exeter School. And you'll, and you'll see what the interest each month is, or dividends, or, and I think even capital gains in this case, correct?
Oh, yeah.
So there'll be a monthly report that we'll be sending that will have the, will have additional information that if you wanted to explain, we'd be happy to come explain with David or another member of his staff.
I, if this does go through and we approve this warrant article, I think on some level, maybe a member of the school board should participate, and maybe we'll talk about that maybe a couple times a year. So we, I don't speak this language, to be honest, and if we're endorsing something, and I don't anticipate anything going sideways, but I feel like we should be kind of in the loop a little bit.
In addition, our school district treasurer called me today, our friend Neil Blyken, who is, happens to be an investment advisor, offering his services to help us.
Yes. Right. So, well, doesn't hurt.
We would be very happy to have a regular attendance by one of the school board members at any of our meetings. And one of our objectives this year was to try to establish that kind of relationship. And they would be welcome, or any, any of the members who wanted to come for any particular meeting.
Okay.
We normally don't have a regular meeting schedule, except for quarterly reviews, if you will.
Right.
It's normally, it's ad hoc to respond to requests for reimbursements from the school district, sent from the town. But, you know, we're not adverse to having a regular meeting schedule if there's business to be done.
Okay.
Molly, is it, I don't know, is this your document?
Yeah, I've had...
I thought it, that's a typo, right? The question mark, income in the warrant, it says, from capital reserve fund, income, question mark.
Actually...
Oh, no, that's, so that's the warrant language.
Oh.
That was the warrant language, and Mr. Graham and I worked up. He was pretty adamant about the question mark.
Yeah. So it's saying, it's asking the voters for the ability to do this.
And then just a really quick question. How long have the four districts that are engaging with Three Bearings been?
I don't know how long, but I know all of them are before I started working here, which was in 2019.
Yeah.
I don't know if, you know the answer.
I don't know the exact date.
Do any other board members have any thing to say?
Well, I would like to make a motion to support adding the warrant article, as suggested by attorney Gordon Graham, to the ballot in the spring election.
Sure.
Or the March election.
Second, okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Heather. So, you're in.
Mr. O'Day, did you have a question?
No, I have a question. I thought we were going to have a discussion, but that's okay. We just went to vote.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
Feel free to speak up. I can't really hear you down there.
Madam Chair, while we're on the topic of other warrant articles, could I ask the board a question on one of those topics?
Yep.
So in the past, the Exeter School Boarders usually added up to $75,000 from fund balance to the special education trust fund. Currently, in your packet you'll see, in your regular board packet, you will see the balance of the current balance of that special education trust fund is $379,250. As I recall, I think the goal was $400,000. Sorry, I'm looking at Patrick. Is that what we were trying to get to?
I think it was $300,000, but that's okay. I mean, either way, there's, you know, the need varies, I know.
Yeah. So because we're right around what the board had hoped to do, Chris Andruski, as in charge of technology and facilities, he wanted me to bring to the board, as going to all the boards in SAU 16, if boards would consider doing, starting up a tech trust fund for, I think what you spoke to last time, these one-time expenses that come up like every five or six years, like the wireless that we pulled out, because it was a one-time expense. They're recommending, over the course of five years, maybe build it to $50,000. So that would be about a $10,000 request out of fund balance to start a technological fund for more of those one-time expenses. Or maybe you want to do 20, given rate of inflation, et cetera, if you don't want it in the operating budget. So that was one suggestion I'd like the board to consider. Another one was for, some districts don't have maintenance trusts. We do. Our maintenance, our capital reserve is 153. The recommendation is to have 150. So that, we're there for Exeter. And then the last one was to perhaps start a trust fund for safety and security, again, for things that maybe would go, like our cameras go down or something like that, that wouldn't necessarily be an expense that you would bill into the operating budget always, but it might be a one-time expense. So those are what are being proposed to other boards to consider. So I certainly wanted Exeter to consider those. Again, our special ed trust, they're about, about, it's about $220,000 for a one student, counting transportation. So I would continue to maybe put some more in there, so we have at least have enough for two, just because when we started that, we were in a different place for expenditures. So I would encourage the board to consider maybe not $75,000, but a smaller amount to get to that 440, for two folks right now. As I mentioned, we're at three, I think, what did I say, 79, 380. So those are the warrants, the additional warrants beyond the operating budget warrant. We do not have any collective bargaining agreement warrant this time, as we did last year. So that wouldn't be on there. So right now, we would have the operating, proposed operating budget, whatever, that gets decided upon for the final number, you know, as it goes through the process. This include trust, trust fund management warrant, which doesn't have a tax impact. And then if any or all of these, in addition to the special ed trust fund. So I'd just throw that out for conversation.
Okay. So we have the one from the trustees. We're going to continue with the special ed to get it up to...
Are we going to continue with the special ed to get it to the 440? Is that the consensus of the board?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's, so, I mean, I can say something about all the things that you just said. I think it's a good idea to have it pay for two spots, because I think that was the intention. Whatever the number was before, I think the intention was to get it up to pay for two spots. And $75,000 is what we've been doing. I mean, it makes sense that we'll put it around 450. That could be two spots. It varies from place to place.
Yeah.
And so that's, and that is something you can't always anticipate when people move into the district, or their status changes, or something happens, whatever. There's a variety of reasons why. So you can't always anticipate that, and that covers us. And it's a significant chunk of money, that it's hard just to shuffle things around to cover that.
Yes.
I guess my question about all these different additional trust funds is, my initial reaction is that I'm not in favor of it. I would just add more money to the capital reserve fund, because I think all these are capital reserve type of items with technology or whatever.
Yep.
So if there's a thought that 150 is other non-tech and non-whatever else needs, and there needs to be, you know, 50 plus that, then I would add money to the capital reserve fund. Because I think that gives us flexibility. You know, instead of having all these little pots that can't be touched for this reason or that reason, we can, we can use it if there's, you know, a furnace goes out or something to help cover some of the expense or whatever. That's something that's not anticipated mid-year. And we've been, I don't know, fortunate or whatever, the past few years, that there's been quite an excess, but that is not always the case.
Right.
It might be, the budget might be closer to, the budget amount might be closer to what we need to spend. And so we may not have that cushion necessarily to cover these things, and we'd have to cut positions or something to meet the need. So I think that's why you have it. So I like the idea of covering those sort of things, like technology, but I would just add it to the capital reserve. So I would just have two warrant articles, one to add something to special ed, because I do think that's a different sort of category, and one to add to the capital reserve, whatever that amount is that seems appropriate.
Well, if we're trying to build to 50,000 additional in each one, maybe put 50,000, and then we'd be like, say, 25 and 25, and then do it again next year?
Mm-hmm.
50,000 total, which would be kind of, in our minds, 25 if something in tech, or just trying to use the numbers that Chris gave me, based on, they did some research and some audits of general costs of things, and that was their recommendation. So would 50,000 be a good number to put, do you think, out of fund balance, I assume, correct?
You mean for both of the...
For both of them, yeah, to start to build. Because it's, that was over...
For tech and safety.
Right, basically. A total of 50,000 in each one was what they were recommending over the course of the next three or four years to build up.
So that's 100,000 then?
Yeah.
Right.
So you could put 100, if you wanted now, in, back in that capital reserve.
But if you did 25, you're saying if you did 25, you'd do it over four years?
Right.
To build up to that?
Yeah.
How does the capital reserve get the money otherwise? Is it an annual thing, or are you...
No, we'd have to, we'd have to designate money to go into it, or there was times like we sold a, we sold a building years ago, and we had like, like $400,000 or something for that, and we held on to it, and then we used it when we expanded the kindergarten. We took that money, so we didn't have to raise that as part of the bond to bring the number down. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we don't, we don't, we can't, we don't have authority just to add to it at the end of the year if we have extra money. We have to get permission from the voters to do that.
And what that means is, at the end of the year, if, if both of these passed, that money has to go into that first. Now, let's say you're in a situation that you only have $50,000 period at the end of the year, and both of them passed. Whichever was first in the order of the warrant, that's where the money would go. So usually the language will say up to. So if you don't have 75,000 at the end of the year, you have to put, so you only have 50, you have to put all 50 into that.
Okay.
So I, I mean, my, I'll just tell you, I'm talking a lot, but my, I mean, my sense is just to do 75 for the special ed one, because we've been doing that. And then just, if that seems sufficient, not do it the following year, and maybe do 50,000 for the other one. Because I think then you can get up to it in a couple years and then not do it.
Right.
And if you, if we're needing to tap into it, because there's not those cushions at the end of the year, or whatever, then maybe we do it for three years or four years. But then the money is sufficient for it.
Right. Yeah.
And then if we want to spend out of the capital reserve...
It goes through a board discussion and a vote, yeah. And it has to be for the purposes specific. Capital reserve, Patrick, is, it gives you a lot of flexibility, which I think is, is a great idea than making it specific.
I think we used some money out of capital reserve, even when we did like the improvements along the roadway between the buildings. We did some of the lighting out of capital reserve. And so we did things at different times to sort of bring some of those costs down for special projects that we hadn't budgeted fully for. So it can be either emergencies or special projects that come up.
So it sounds like we in agreement for those two, for special ed 75 and capital reserve 50, from fund balance?
Yes.
For both those, up to 75 and up to 50. Is there a preference on the order?
I'd like to see special ed.
I agree.
Special ed then capital reserve.
I agree. Because I mean, I think that's such a big hit. If we can't meet that, or capital reserve, it seems like we have a variety of ways that we can wait on things. You can't wait on the special education. You just have to do it immediately.
All right, great. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. And those we'll have in January for the public hearing, and you'll get a copy of those first that we read through. They should be pretty familiar. The only one really that takes this, maybe something a little new, is any changes in this year's budget. But again, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry this year with no collective bargaining agreement to explain. So. It's also nice, like Patrick spoke to, if we can get that special ed up to the number, we don't have to do that. And it's a collective bargaining agreement year, it's one less, even though it's not a tax impact, it's one less money amount on that warrant. So that also is nice this year to do both of them, I think, in anticipation that maybe we won't have to put both on when there's a CBA on there.
That's a good point.
Right. So we don't have to do any votes?
Nope. I just needed to know what to, what to do.
And both of those don't have a tax impact?
Right.
Right? That's, have that sort of language in there?
From, from balance, yes. No tax impact, correct. So the only one on the warrant that'll have a tax impact is the budget, operating budget.
Right.
Want me to go back to the rest of the administrative report?
That'd be great.
The Vision Summit, just to bring you all up to date. That is where we're taking the current vision of a graduate and then our DEI mission statement, and holding a summit in, I think it's April. I haven't, don't have the exact date yet. Have to meet with the committee again for a half a day. And we're going to try to get high community engagement and high board engagement. Because the purpose is to look at that DEI mission statement and take the intent of that and put some language in addition into our vision statement. So our vision statement, we're not taking out anything. We're trying to add, so that, that equity language and that DEI language are the mission of that, so that's really begins to become how we do business here. They're not standalone, right? It's really part of our culture and climate around equity and diversity. And so right now, they're separate, kind of like we used to do SEL separate a lot. And that now is kind of how we do business with our MTSS. That's what we're trying to do, because our MTS systems are, are both DEI work. So trying to get that language into our overall vision statement is the goal of that Vision Summit. And that's critical, because that will drive the strategic planning work the following year. We'll use that, which is why we wanted to try to do the Vision Summit now and get that solid by June, so that we can use that for strategic, to drive that strategic planning as the foundation. So...
This is for the spring?
Yes, it'll be in, in March or April. I just can't remember the date. I can look it up in my book. But there's also an invite, because right now, it's the Curriculum Philosophy Committee that's helping me do the vision kind of timeline and work and how to advertise it. So if anyone from this board would like to participate in those meetings, you're more than welcome. Just let me know, and I will send you an invite too. If not, that's okay too. We'll continue. We just want to make sure that the boards feel like they had voice into the process. Certainly, participating in the Vision Summit, you'll have voice. But if you want any more voice into like what we're doing, or how we're advertising, it's going to be very similar, I'm looking at Heather, to how we're doing the communication survey. So you'll see how we're going to push that out with a QR code and lots of different places and posters. You'll be seeing that come out the very beginning of January. We're going to, that's kind of our test pilot to see what kind of return we get, because that's open to the community and students and everyone just like this would be, to see if it helps having a QR code. And we're going to have childcare and food and things like that. So hopefully, we'll get a higher level of engagement. But once I get that date, I will let everyone know. So hopefully, you can block off those few hours on your calendar. But again, if you're interested in attending, just send me an email, and I will send you the invite dates, if you want to come and participate to help us advertise, really. It's really just advertising the Vision Summit. So. The budget update and the financials, Molly, I'm going to turn that over to you.
So thank you for signing the manifest. So also included in your board pack is the budget for next year. So when we discussed it last, last month, we had given you a pack that looked almost exactly like this, but we had talked about removing the two items, the literacy program and the access points. So this budget removes those two items. So on the front page, I put the number we presented in November versus the number we are presenting now, and the delta is those two numbers. So nothing else has changed. And then on the current year financial, which was in your board pack provided, you'll see the changes from November to now. So we had some substitute, some cost-related substitutes. We had an employee where the employee's on leave and the new person had come in, so it was a bit of a timing of the term, not termination, but putting the employee on leave. We had some extracurricular and student activity, which is fantastic. And then the big thing is the board improved encumbrance. So this is a little bit larger than what was removed from the budget, because we put in the K5, rather than what was in the budget was the K2, I believe it was.
Right.
For the literacy program?
Yes, yep. Sorry, yes. And the access points are also in there too. So even with those added in the current year budget, the remaining expense is 1.3 million, which at this point in time is very healthy. So did anyone have any questions?
That's what we anticipate having left over right now?
Yep.
Even encumbering the literacy and the wireless?
So I believe, Molly, if, as I recall, this now is an overall a 3.3 increase?
Yep. So if you look on the front page here, 3.33% increase. And it equates to 790,825. So if you go to page two, this is the same breakout that we provided last month. You'll just see the two lines where the access points are removed has gone down as well as the literacy program is now 801 dollars instead of the large amount that was there before.
I just have a question around the literacy, just so to refresh my memory.
Sure.
So from a timing perspective, we're not, by waiting?
I can answer that, yes. No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't purchase that until July 1 anyway if the budget passed.
Right.
So you would approve it out of fund balance. We would, you would take a vote and it was, so the timing would be the same as far as purchasing, yes. Know that you will see overall an increase next year in that one over 800 dollars because there'll be consumables that will be replaceable, et cetera, like we have seen in the past for journeys or our math programs, et cetera. But those aren't one-time expenses. Those are reoccurring consumable.
So did anyone have any questions either on the current year financial or the budget? Or any proposed changes if this is not what you wanted for the public hearing?
I mean, I think the budget looks fine. One of the questions I have is just about on page three, sort of the default budget versus?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't go over that yet.
Yeah.
Yep, so, so for the default, I included that. So the basis of your default budget is the current year budget plus or minus any one-time expenditures or mandatory obligations either by law or by contract. And by contract, meaning it's been on the ballot before or part of the SAU assessment. So what I did is, the basis is the 24 budget. But what I've done here for you is done the 25 default versus the 25 proposed because that's what people are going to see on the ballot. So when you go to the ballot, you're going to see the two numbers. And so this box in the middle is the difference between those two numbers. So the first line is the non-union salary increases, including FICA and retirement. So anybody not in a union would not be able to include any increase in the default. The leadership and summer institute stipends, I did not see those anywhere in the CBA, so therefore could not be included. The non-union health and dental increase, that 9.9% GMR cannot be included. It can be included for those in an active CBA, but not for those that are not in a union. Any permanent subs that have come out of the grant into the operating budget, you can't add new positions. It's technically an add. You can't increase the daily substitutes, any supplies because of, anything because of inflation, you can't include. Now, for the admin maintenance contracts and the tech, some of that decrease moved to the tech. So that's why there's a decrease there. But you're taking the old number from both sides. But again, the increases in the tech, we can't include. Same as professional development. The first student and bus monitors, can't do it. Even though we have a multi-year contract with first student, that first student contract wasn't on the ballot. It's part of the operating budget. And then all increases related to the increase of utilities or the increase of cleaning costs or the rising cost of everything, pretty much, in facilities, you can't include. And also all the facilities wages because we contract out facilities to the cooperative. They're not in a union, so all of their increases would not be able to be included. And then food service as well. The increase in the cost of food would not be able to include, be included. So that is the delta between the two numbers that we calculated for the default and the proposed.
So one of the things that, I guess one of the ways I look at this, and maybe I'm not an investment person, so you can tell me why it's wrong.
Okay.
But one of the ways I look at this is that the default budget, no matter what, is going to go into effect. And so the $430,000, instead of it being a 3.3% increase, it's less than a 2% increase really above the default budget. Because that $430,000 is really the additional money that we're asking for that's not going to be approved even if it doesn't get, even if the budget doesn't pass.
Yeah, you can look at it that way. I mean, sometimes the default's higher than the proposed.
Sometimes it is.
Sometimes it is.
But in this year, I mean, that's right. Sometimes it is. Sometimes the default can be higher than what we're, what we're asking for in different scenarios. But this year, it's, it's, it's about 1.8% above the default budget or something like that. And there are things in here like busing, which has been horrible, very difficult to get across the state, and substitutes that we have, you know, that's, that's a big chunk of the money right there. That's like almost 150,000 of it. We just add those two together. I mean, that's, those are things that we have, we're putting money towards a solution that meets student needs. It's, it would be hard for, I, I don't know. I think we have to be prepared to explain this to the voters so we can, you know, we can say why these things are really needed. And if they weren't passing, how much it would really affect daily life. I mean, of course, I mean, I'm not minimizing the, you know, increases for keeping good people here that aren't on, you know, that aren't part of the union and those things too. I mean, those things are important too. But particularly those couple of things are very recent needs that we've addressed. And if we didn't have the money for it, we couldn't address it otherwise.
Correct.
To your point, Patrick, too, some of these things, obviously, we would have to provide, like transportation.
Right.
So we would have to cut, and usually it's positions. Because $430,000, we're not going to make up in supplies or anything like that. So it's position and or programs.
Right, that's a good point.
This might be a question for the principals. But what, for so, for the past several years, we've been talking so much about the substitutes. Can you remind us sort of where we're at? Like are the, just where are we at in terms of our permanent subs and sort of the need versus? Do you feel like this is working and it's covered? And I mean, obviously, I think that would be a huge loss, it seems, if this was not passed.
Sure. I mean, I would say for Lincoln Street School, probably about 90-plus percent of the substitute coverage that we have are through our permanent subs. It is a rarity right now to, we have maybe two to three people that are wonderful, but based on their schedules or what they're looking to do, you know, are sporadic. So without the permanent subs that we have budgeted for and that we have filled in those positions right now, we would, we would be shutting down intervention on a regular, daily basis, et cetera. It would be an impact across the school.
I'd say similar. We did survey our staff, what, two months ago maybe? They just talked about like, what is the, what's been the impact from having these permanent subs and these positions as we were building the budget? We had a lot of staff response, actually, that said, please keep them. It's a huge, it's nice for the kids to have predictable people, to know who's going to come in, to have familiar faces. When we were down some paraprofessionals for students who required legally to have one-on-ones, sometimes we had to shift and put those people in those positions so students were supported. They, it's, it's been incredibly helpful. We had a difficult time filling a couple of the positions. But I think right now, both of our schools have those positions full. Which has been really, it's incredibly helpful on a day-to-day operations.
Yeah, I just think it's important to underscore it, to have it in there because we've worked so hard to get those folks in place. And it does seem like it's helped a lot covering some scenes.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that survey was put out as a, as a barometer to the ESAR funds being spent, which that's why it says usually was grant funded. It says we wanted to ensure that everybody felt they were useful before we put it in this budget. But that was funded by ESAR money. Because I know sometimes that comes up as a question from the community. And that's why that survey went out as part of the tracking for the grant system.
The other thing is that, I mean, this topic also has come up as part of the collective bargaining with, you know, both groups has come up in terms of how much, you know, people being spread too thin and that sort of thing. And it was important to provide that sort of support. So even if it doesn't get embedded into collective bargaining agreements, I know that those topics come back to this board and we discuss it and look for ways to try to meet that need.
Does anyone have any other changes before the public hearing?
I do not.
Great. All right, thanks.
So that wraps up your update?
Yes, I do have a school calendar question, which I can do now or save it for new business.
You can go ahead.
So I have a request to the board, your school calendar. We did get the date for the primary, which would be January 23. Right now in our school calendar, that's a regular student day. Many of our elementary schools have voting in their school. Exeter does not. However, if we all have the same PD day, we can combine resources and, and like our unified arts folks and stuff can meet all together from all the schools. So that's why we're asking Exeter also, even though the voting isn't at our school because all the other elementary schools are doing the same thing. So we would like to flip, initially, there was an in-service day on March 29. We'd like to flip March 29 to January 23. Because January 23, as I mentioned, will have voting. So March 29 would be a regular school day with students. But the 23 would be a professional development day. So to flip those two. So it doesn't impact the number of student days or anything like that. It's just a swap because they, we got, the voting date was given to us so late, as you know, for the primary. So that's the first question about the calendar. The second additional question is May 24, which is a Friday before Memorial Day. Administration has requested that the board consider making that a professional development day for our staff to work through the new literacy program. That should be chosen by then. Julie and Carla have made contacts with, all of them to ensure that the teachers could get resources that would make that day helpful for like teacher additions, et cetera. So, and those are usually free, in other words, you don't have to buy those. So even though, you know, the board wouldn't have approved the expenditure of the money yet, to your question, Heather, we could still do that professional development day. In the past, when we've done a new program such as the math program, we've tried to offer professional development over the summer. Some teachers do, you know, are able to make it and some educators can't for a variety of reasons. And so we, it was our hope, and I support the request, to have that May 24, which is that Friday before Memorial Day, to able to have all the staff participate in that professional development. Some may choose to do some work over the summer and some may not. But I also hear from educators that if we had had this over the summer, we would have looked at it or we would have just, they would have had some time to be more comfortable with it. Not that they have to, have to, don't have to. But it does provide opportunity for them to have access to teacher additions, et cetera, a little bit ahead of time. So we have plenty of student hours, which is how we do our calendar with the state. So we are very excessive in that for our kids. So reducing the student day by one would not have a huge impact for our school approval. But it does allow our staff an additional professional development day because we have the new literacy program.
So I have a question. Why not just have it on March 28?
I think, was there a reasoning you wanted it the 24th?
The 24th? I mean, we see lower attendance on that day just because it's the Friday before the long weekend. So just as far as impact on?
I think also the timing of choosing the literacy program and getting the?
Yeah, because I was just saying, you were talking about changing the March date to January and essentially canceling the March date, right?
Yeah, because there's already one PD day in March, the 12th.
I know, but if we, I was just thinking if we already had it on the schedule.
Right.
And if the literacy program was at a point to be available to tackle at that point, maybe it isn't. But, but just to use the date that's already on the schedule and just schedule an additional date instead of canceling.
My understanding was a timing issue, but time?
Because I think the goal is to have the options narrowed down to two by January 10. And then they're going to be using February, March to pilot and then make our final decision.
Right.
And then do the training.
I couldn't remember the timeline, yeah.
I think it's a good idea to have it during the school year and not, yeah, the summer.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't?
Well, they'll have continued training all year. Normally, when you get a new program, you can do that. But it's nice to have just a view with a trainer to say, here's a teacher's addition. Here's what it looks like. Here's where you find information. Here's how you can, things you can look at over the summer. They'll have additional scheduled training next year with PD. Normally, there's, I don't know, usually it's up to 10 days or something like that as when you buy a new program. So that will continue. It's just to get it, to allow our educators to get a feel for it and a jump on it instead of trying to have only 20 people come in the summer because that's who could come. And then you're trying to start the year and people are in different places because 20 people went to the training in the summer and the others weren't able to. So it's trying to build, I think, a consistency and a smoother transition to a new literacy program for our kids.
Well, there have to be a lot more PD days than next, in the next year's calendar.
No, usually they do it like during the day and like, so during PLC time or they'll, they go in into the classrooms and they observe teachers and give them feedback on it, on the lessons, et cetera.
I mean, I personally don't have any issue with adding PD days if it makes sense. I guess I'm a little just curious about the impact on families if they've been planning for that March 28 day. It's right before the Easter weekend. And so I don't know if, I mean, I know there's school on Friday, but I don't know if people made plans anyhow to be just thinking aloud about whether or not that's, that's affected some families that they've already made their plans to go away and taking that day away if that's going to have an impact.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, we could use two additional PD days. We always, it's something we consistently hear, I think in negotiations also, Patrick, is that we never have enough time.
Right.
Even to discuss how the piloting's going, you know, would be an opportunity in March between the final two programs. As well as DEI training, you know, PLC training. There's plenty of things that have been ongoing that certainly they could use both days, I'm sure of it.
Yeah.
If you wanted to keep that day too. I would still advocate for adding then the 24th May day because of the?
No, I understand the reason for the one in May because of the literacy program. That's, I'm not saying to not do that.
Yeah.
I think, I'm thinking aloud more than taking a position.
Yeah.
I don't know.
For the school hour totals, would it be possible to keep that March?
Yeah, we're way over.
So we could keep the March?
You could keep both, yeah, you could keep the 29th and just add the 24th and the 23rd of January and the 24th of May and keep January as is.
I thought we were adding.
We were flipping the March. So, so the motion would be either to add two additional professional development days, January 23 and May 25, or to flip the March 29 day to make it a school, regular school day and still add those two professional days for the 23rd of January and the 24th of?
I think, I think that, I think it sounds like either way the motion is to, the potential motion that hasn't been made yet is to add those two days, but it's whether or not to eliminate that March day. I mean, the, so the other side of me, just thinking aloud again, remembering in COVID times with parents coming in here furious about having to provide childcare for that day or take off work for a day. This would be a little different because they'd have a lot of advance notice. But still, it's, it's, you know, it's, they were not going to have a lot of advance notice for January, but there's not much we can do about that. They would have notice for the other ones. But, you know, I guess that's the other side of the argument in terms of the impact of the family side of the coin.
Exactly what I was going to say. I think it's, either way you slice it, it's some impact, right?
Yeah.
It's not very much noticed for the January one and that could affect families who are looking.
That's true.
If anything, I think that would have the most impact because it's, you have to, we're coming up against the holiday and then we're right back in January. But I think either way, it has an impact. It's just whether? Yeah, I mean, that is a consideration, but either way, it would have. I think the January one probably has more immediate, you know, just because there's not time to plan.
Right. So I think, I think my, after, thinking aloud, my, my, my two cents is to, is to add the two days, but eliminate the March one. Because it still sounds like it's going to, that's going to meet the needs that we're playing. I know folks could use more, but then there may be some families out there that say, well, we don't want our kids to be missing more school days and whatnot. It's easy to justify adding one day, but adding two days is a little harder mid-year to do that. So that would be my, my sense.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make the, I'll make a motion that we add two professional development days in January and May. You'll have to remind me what the dates were.
January 23 and May 24.
And remove the professional development day scheduled for March.
29.
March 29.
The, the second one, I guess there are two in March already.
29, yeah.
Whatever the date was in that, yeah.
Second? I'll second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask one question, just related to that point of notice and communications?
I'm going to ask the principals to put it out this week in their little...
Right.
Particularly for the, the January day.
Yeah.
Yeah, sooner we can let people know, the better, that's true.
Yep.
Moving right along. Approval of the meeting minutes for November 14th, public and non-public. I looked through them, and I did not see any changes. Would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes for the meeting held on November 14th.
You, just to clarify, so you're moving both the public and non-public minutes?
Oh, yeah, right. Yes, I move to approve both the public and non-public minutes from on November 14th.
I'll second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Principal McCloskey.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for the approval on the, on the calendar, particularly the May day. We really appreciate that. The update this month, our, our reading coaching with Mary Ann Nice, who's consulted with us for a couple of years, is ongoing, using Coaching Model. Mary Ann works closely with classroom teachers, and to target instruction and assist teachers, and growing the Reading Strategy Toolkit. That's been ongoing and will continue through the rest of the year. And we are, we are excited with that work. Our second round of Math Win began at the end of November this cycle. The focus of the cycle includes building solid foundations of multiplication and division. Students will increase their strategies to solve increasingly difficult multiplication and division problems. Moving right along to field trips. Last week, our fifth grade students went to the C Science Center in Manchester. It was part of their kickoff for their learning exhibition later on this year. And they, they focused on a range of topics from chemistry and biology to geology and physics. While there, they spent time exploring a marble steam challenge, a chemistry mixing station, and an exploratory session involving over 30 different science exhibits. And students really are practicing and working using the scientific process of Claim Evidence and Reasoning, CER, which is something that aligns with what they are using up at CMS. So really familiarizing themselves with the language, as well as the process. Today and tomorrow, students in fourth grade were able to go to the State House in Concord, as well as the New Hampshire Historical Museum. The field trip supports the fourth grade social studies curriculum, specifically civics and government, as students studied how groups of people make rules to create responsibilities and protect freedoms. After-school enrichment, fifth grade pow is underway in collaboration with Exeter Police Department. Fifth grade students have signed up and participated in the after-school program with games and activities, with local police officers, strengthening the connection between students and police officers from the community. Today, they went bowling at shooters, which is kind of one of their, I think they have one more week, but kind of like one of their culminating activities with that. Our winter session of after-school activities is scheduled to start shortly after we come back from the holiday break, I think the second week of January, and we have a new kind of listing of activities that kids are signing up for this week. And then we've had a couple of events, actually quite a few events, over the last month. On November 17th, players from the Harlem Wizards visited third and fourth grade students ahead of the CMS PTO fundraiser that was held that evening at the high school. Students were chosen to play against teachers in a shot contest. Students prevailed. Several lucky students were given free tickets to the game, headbands, wristbands, and, you know, it was, it was a very high energy, it was a lot of fun. The players from the Harlem Wizards really know how to get a crowd excited. We hit a decibel level unheard of at the gym. So that was, that was fun. Fifth grade students were not able to participate at that, because they were actually here in the cafeteria, watching a student performance of the LSS Drama Club presentation, Junior Broadway, Raise Your Voice. And it was really just, we had a small window where the Wizards were able to come to the school. We, and we wanted our fifth grade students to see their fifth grade peers perform, so. But a lot of our fifth graders, I can assure you, were at the high school that night. And so this, this performance featured our fifth grade actors and actresses, and they had two school day performances, as well as two evening performances for families. In the spring, we have our fourth grade students invited to participate in the fourth grade show, which I believe will have a Willy Wonka theme. And if you know what's coming out in the theaters, there's a strong connection there. Our Lincoln Street Winter Concert for Band and Chorus is scheduled for this Thursday at 6 o'clock in the LSS gym. We're looking forward to that. Students, our musicians, will also be performing for their peers earlier in the day, so they get two performances that day. And that's pretty much where we're at right now. Certainly, when we shift the calendar to January, we're going to start thinking about end of the first semester, our progress reports, you know, getting that new round of iReady data. So there'll be a lot happening that we're starting to shift our conversations with staff about, you know, as we prepare to really hit the ground running in January. Thank you.
Okay, Tanya?
Yeah. Hello. So it's been, I think the last time we had a board meeting, we talked about the budget. So I kind of was trying to look through the calendar to see if there is anything that we didn't update from back then. We did have our student-led conferences, which were great. We did have some parent feedback, and so we've talked both of our schools on some improvements for the next go, next semester. So hopefully, they continue to be good, and we just keep working at improving them. On November 9th, we are continuing our work with our UDL, which is Universally Designed for Learning, and that's, we've kind of talked about it briefly. At some point, we should probably put together a more thorough presentation, so you understand all of the work that's going on with it. It's really cool, but it's just making sure that all of our lessons have an entry point for every type of learner. And so it's just removing obstacles to learning, so that all students can find success. And so there's been a couple of rounds of different groups of teachers, but we have a group this year, and they are, there's a partnership that they're doing. They're going through classrooms, doing some observations, coming up with some feedback of what they might be able to offer to make some of those lessons more accessible to kids. But it's just, it's really cool and just good learning for staff and for students. We had a team, Beth and Deanna, and then our social workers, they went to Nabida in Florida, so they attended that conference and represented there and ran a couple of sessions. We have after-school enrichment that's getting ready to start next month. Couple new options. One is French. That comes from a new permanent sub that we hired, actually. He speaks French, and then he's taught music, and so he's going to offer one of those sessions. And then we have another gentleman that started as a permanent sub. He's going to be offering like a filmmaking. So there'll be a couple of cool new options up for kids, which is exciting. We had a group put together Thanksgiving baskets with a DEIJ lens. We also extended it to any family who has like a celebratory meal that their family is involved in, and so we were able to put together meals for family. And we also, this past weekend, held, it's our third year doing it, which we call Holiday Hope. It's not largely advertised outside of our school community, because we want to maintain the dignity of our families. But we have over 40 families between Main Street School and Lincoln Street School, who we know this can be a challenging time of year. And so we gather donations, and we create like a mock store in our cafeteria with wrapping station, and families come through and they shop. And so we held it on Saturday, and it's just super cool, and our staff comes and volunteers, and they wrap gifts, and we have a room for kids to hang out and play, so that they are not aware of what shopping is taking place. And it's just a really nice, fun event. So that happened on Saturday. And our nurse, Caitlin Anglia, was, oversaw a lot of that, so kudos to her, if she's listening, sometimes she watches. But it was a lot of work, and coordinating with community partners, including Exeter Fire, and so just really grateful for everybody contributing to that. Our work with our literacy committee has been going strong. We have two more presentations. One is tomorrow, and then one is early in January, and then that kicks off the timeline at the beginning of the school year next year, to kind of narrow those down and, and figure out what programs we want to pursue. We are going forward in our professional learning communities, working on our math proficiency tasks and rubrics, to ensure that students are having similar learning experiences, and common language, and common expectations, which should transfer to how we report out, so that families understand exactly what we're talking about when we say that a student is proficient in a competency. So there's lots of work taking place there to build that understanding. We have some DEIJ choice sessions at our school that's being offered on the last student day. It's a half day. In the afternoon, our teachers are going to be signing up for different topics, all DEIJ-related, and so we're looking forward to another round of those. And then we'll offer a follow-up session in the spring. I don't know if anybody is interested in attending them, but I'm happy to send the links. If anybody would be interested in what some of those sessions are, if you ever wanted to come by and kind of check them out or join us, you're welcome to. I wanted to say thanks to Marnie Byrd, who displayed some really cool student artwork at the SAU offices. She took some time, she had like an extra prep on one of her days, and she went down and hung up a bunch of our artwork. And it's just kind of fun to see it displayed for a real audience that's going through. We have a partnership, our second graders are working with Officer Petrowski and getting their DARE lessons. Those are all on safety, that's what he focuses on. And our first graders had a freshman from Exeter High School, who went to Swayze, I think, and she started the Peach Project. And so she came and explained how you can be a good active role model in the community, and had some of our kids generate ideas for what they could do to improve their community. It was a nice, brief lesson, but it was nice, and the kids were excited to see that something she started at their age has come to fruition and had some pictures. And so that was neat. We have quite a few classes that are putting together cards for Meals on Wheels. I see them coming through the office all the time, decorated, and happy to contribute to that. We got Exeter Youth Basketball starting up. I wanted to announce that Morgan Ryan, one of our second grade teachers, had her son. So she had a baby boy, so we've got a new member of our family. And we are still, we've hired a few paras, which we're excited about. A couple just started this week, I think three are starting this week. But we still have a couple of positions posted, if anyone's watching. We need recess and some special education paras. Those are what we are in need of right now. That's it. Thanks. Yeah.
Are all conferences all year long at both schools, I guess? Are they parent-student?
There, there's, they are student-led conferences. We've met with our leadership team and tried to take some parent feedback. And so what we've done at Main Street School is that time is kind of divided, where students showcase work, and then there's an opportunity for parents to have some conversations with the teacher. And so I think that's been pretty well-received. That's been the feedback that we've had so far. Some more of our feedback this last time was on, even though it's, it's awesome to see the kids talk about their learning, that sometimes parents don't always have a direct understanding if, if what they are seeing is what is expected for grade level, or, or whatever. So we're trying to figure out how we can do that, where students can be really proud of their work, and also parents walk away with a clear understanding of what, of where they are in relation to their peers.
This is a totally wild idea, but has everyone, I'm just wondering if there's a way for students to demonstrate their learning via video, that parents see, and then they get to... I mean, I guess you missed that, that actual live interaction, which I love, but as a parent, I have that same experience, where like, it just feels like we're, yeah, we just need more time.
It is like a rush day, because I think like, in order to fit everybody in on those days, like it can be a little bit challenging, but to, but Esther's saying, to her point, is like, we do have the resource of using Seesaw, where videos can be uploaded. And so some of that is like conversations that we're having with our teachers, and Ryan and Deanna can speak to what's happening over there too, of like, what is a quality artifact to include on there, and how do we link maybe a rubric, so that it's, it's more than just like seeing a cute video, but then families, like what is the information coming out of these artifacts that we're presenting, and how can we articulate that more clearly, outside of just like our two report cards that come out each year? So that's what we're talking about.
So originally, when we purchased Seesaw, the purpose was to develop the portfolio K through eight. Then the pandemic came, and the shift for teachers had to happen to use it as a daily, kind of a daily exchange of information. So getting back to the true purpose of Seesaw, where their, where their lessons, they choose to be artifacts are tagged with standards and their competencies, is, has got to come back around. We just were at the conversation that they've returned to, is what is a good artifact, what does that look like, how do we, do we, is it, they always ask for a number, is it four, is it eight, how many, which is hard to say, right, because some teachers have different paces and different projects. So it's in conversation. But that's really why Seesaw was purchased. The intent was to develop that portfolio, so as an eighth grader, you could see your development K through eighth grade in reading, in math.
Well, it just makes me think about when we were talking, I think last year, about aligning the iReady reports with the report cards, like in a dream world. Heather, would it be if, if we could maximize that tool, and as a parent, you get the iReady, you get the student snapshot, and you get the report card, right? And then, and then you can kind of, I don't know, speak, I know the timing doesn't always think up, but...
Give us five to eight more years.
Yeah. Yeah, I just appreciate that you're continuing to like, mostly I just have enormous appreciation for how you continue to iterate on how to make that, you know, just both a good student-centered process and a process that parents can really track and understand.
Yes. And it's something that like, both of our schools right now are working on with Jill Lizier, that's the curriculum director at the SAU office, is coming up with like really clear proficiency scales for each one of our competencies, kind of like the ICANS under the competencies even, like it really delineates that. And then when we have those, and they're kind of task-neutral, then you would be able to attach them with almost anything that came home, so that a family would be able to see and start sending home some more artifacts. Like, we would collect them, so that we have, you know, a compilation of work when we go to make our reports. But also that more stuff is coming home for families to be able to see, like, oh, I can see that they just need like these extra skills in order to reach proficiency, so that there's more communication, instead of just these couple of touchpoints along the way. So it's stuff that we're working on and building right now.
Anything else? All right, thanks. Thank you.
They're looking at you like, what are you doing?
I skipped something. I also wanted to apologize. I forgot, we, we had the budget meeting last month, so we skipped the school report. So we had, we had a very successful student-led conference as well, highly attended, but with some feedback that we're looking to move towards April. But I also was very excited to share with you that last week, we had a classroom library refresh at all three grade levels. We had some extra money that we encumbered and designated for, just looking to really just kind of broaden our classroom library offerings, and as well as updates. So what we did is we surveyed teachers about some genres that they felt like were maybe underrepresented in their classroom libraries. We worked with Water Street Bookstore, and they worked with us to get not only discounts on the books, but additional discounts from the publishers, and really increase the number of books that we were able to get based on the money that we had allotted for the assignment. And we worked with them and talked about the desired genres, based on our teacher survey, and our commitment to DEIJ, to incorporate titles with broader representation. So we ended up, every classroom in the school got about 40 new titles. So third grade had like a batch, fourth grade had a batch, fifth grade had a batch. So the next step in that process is to, and our, our school librarian is working, to kind of talk up those new titles to increase engagement and awareness of what has now been added to the library. So whether that be through some recorded book talks, or some live book talks, et cetera. So we're working on that piece. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that was something that we're very proud and excited about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to committee reports. The first committee is DEIJ.
Well, they're meeting 20th, right? Is the next meeting?
Next week. Abby, how is that, like, the way the committee is formed this year, and it's, how is that working? Like, how often are you getting together with the school DEIJ committee?
It's been about once a month since we got up and going, but Lincoln Street has like a kind of offshoot committee that also meets more frequently, and Main Street has some stuff that's going on more frequently too, so our broad committee meets. And then some of us meet with the SAU committee as well.
Okay.
So I would say it feels like we're visiting DEIJ topics quite frequently.
Mm-hmm.
And like we talked about at our last committee meeting, our purpose this year for that larger committee is really going to be to go through an equity audit together.
Okay. Great, thank you. In the next meeting for you guys is when?
Next week, the 20th.
Okay. Policy. I didn't see anything in our packets.
So the policy committee is meeting again on Thursday. We met last month, and what we're focusing on last month and this month is looking at... We met last month and what we're focusing on last month and this month is looking at a set of policies to create an inaugural sort of joint board policy manual. There's a couple of policies that are unique to the joint board, things like how to, how to figure what quorum is, for example. And right now it's in the co-op policy manual, which really doesn't make any sense. It's not unique to the co-op. We just didn't have anywhere for it to land. There's a couple of those that are like that. And then there's some other ones that are already in policy manuals, things like public meetings and public input and the right to know law and the roles of a chairperson and things that are like that. So it's not going to be, the initial policy manual isn't going to be anywhere near as comprehensive as what we have in our district. It's going to be much smaller, but just to give some common touchstones so that if someone wants to know how to reach out to the joint board or what the responsibilities might be or just how they do business, that there'd be some guidelines that are there and it's not relying on, you know, one or two or three or four people that might have all the knowledge in their head. It's a shared understanding of what's there. So it was really useful because we took some of these policies that were on the books and it's, you know, I had looked at them initially and thought, you know, this was, we don't need to change much. And then the more we started to have discussion, people saw really good opportunities to make tweaks that fit more with how we wanted to, or how the joint board actually works or, you know, notice things that might've been unique to the board or a little bit out of sync or might've been opportunities to improve something. I know I'm being very general here because we don't have the actual policies to look at, but it was a good discussion. We thought initially it was going to be a half an hour. I think we met for the full hour and a half.
The whole time.
Yeah, and we, and we're going to continue to come back together just to fine tune it more. And the plan is that at the January joint board meeting, we'd present that to the board to potentially approve or at least to consider if they weren't ready to approve it. So, I mean, we've operated for a long time without having a separate policy manual. A lot of joint boards across the state don't have them. Some do. This is a project that I think I spoke with David about probably a year and a half ago. And it's been, you know, it's been in the works. There hasn't been an urgency because it's, it's something we've operated fine without it, but I think it will be a valuable addition if, you know, whenever we approve it.
Thank you. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, we are meeting this Thursday in person with Dr. Asbell as a committee. I think that's been a couple of months, right? As a little like side note to the superintendent evaluation, as part of Dr. Asbell's goals, it was community engagement. And Heather and I belong to a, an anti-racism group outside of the school board, but she attended and spoke with our attendees. It was a BIPOC family event at the YMCA. And I just find you very approachable, very open, and I thought that people were very receptive and I think they were happy to see your face. So thank you for attending that.
You're welcome.
Wellness. Whoever's in charge of wellness, I never get invited. So I don't know who I have to talk to to get on that committee.
I think it's Jean Pierce, so I'll send Jean Pierce over.
Oh, I did actually reach out to her last time. I did.
Yeah, she canceled that last.
And then the Safety and Security Task Force will not meet again until, I think, January.
Yep, I think so.
Sometime in January. Yep.
Is it on the calendar?
It's Thursday, February 22nd, actually. I lied, at the high school, 9:00 AM.
There will be snacks this time.
Oh, good.
Got a lot of feedback on no parfaits from those first responders.
Yeah, right. Okay. And then the, the communications, great.
Community Engagement Task Force Committee. So we met, what was it, last week?
Yes.
We, we are getting ready to collectively launch our first SAU 16 Communication Survey. So this survey is for all six towns in the SAU 16. We're inviting caregivers, parents, community members, students, pretty much any resident of the SAU 16 to participate. It's brief. It's under five minutes. We're going to be, the committee is working to get flyers printed and posted all over all six towns. Come see us if you want some flyers and we'll get them to you. We're also going to be posting on some of the, you know, social media forums. And I'll talk in a minute, but we did talk about maybe getting some advertisements in like the Carriage Town News and other local media sources. So we really want broad, diverse engagement in this survey. It is not a survey for people to give feedback on communications for their specific, for the individual schools within the SAU 16. So it's the SAU 16 as a whole. And it's a great opportunity, I think, for people to share where they feel like they're really getting information, what's really working, what they're proud of, as well as to make suggestions for improvement and even like drilling down into questions if you do have a student with special needs, you know, if there's, how you're getting information. There's questions about frequency of communication, but it is designed to be really succinct and easy to fill out. And we'll have QR codes posted everywhere, so hopefully it's just easy to do too. It's currently ready, but we've decided to open it up in January and stay tuned. And I think the committee did talk about, I guess, what I'd like to invite some discussion around and maybe make a motion to approve is we did look at some of the local papers and some of the ones like the Carriage Town News that are shared by the six towns about the possibility of taking out an ad in January and reaching some people that way. Esther, correct me if I'm wrong, but we talked about possibly getting board approval to approve up to $200 in advertising.
Yeah, we don't necessarily need board approval. We just wanted to inform the Byrd because it's $5,000 that we need board approval or three quotes on. But I think you just wanted to inform the board, so it wasn't a surprise if you saw that in the carriage.
I'd like to inform you.
Crier, whatever it is.
Yeah, and I think we're still looking, I mean, we are still looking to see if that's, you know, we're meeting again in January to discuss that, but the committee members are currently researching, you know, how to get announcements into local papers and also for, if we would get more visibility through an ad, to look into options for that.
How are people going to take the survey? Is like a QR code linked?
It's a QR code and link. Yep. And so.
And you can do it, you can do it right on your phone from the QR code.
QR code.
Yep. That'll be on the flyer.
I'm assuming you're going to put this on social media?
Yeah, the members are going to put it on social media. Yep.
Yeah, so we haven't made decisions. That's why we're meeting in January to make decisions, I think, as to, some people are submitting, some of the other towns that have newsletters, like the Brentwood newsletter, are submitting things for publication, which have to be submitted in advance for it to be out in January. And then one of the committee members is looking into some advertising opportunities.
Yeah, how I understood it was that each town that's represented, because every town has representation, was going to kind of look into their own towns, kind of personal, what do folks all read? And then contact and see what the deadline for submission was for a January run, et cetera. I know in Brentwood, they have to have it in by December 15th to run in January. So we're going to send Kate, who's the rep, she's going to then take that flyer and get it in. So I think it's more just an awareness thing and if other towns choose to do that, some towns didn't feel like they really had something that would be good. So it's really up to the members representing, representing the town as to how they want to kind of circulate that. Certainly on our end, we'll send it out to all the principals to send out on email as well as the teachers that still send home a hard copy of something. There was a request to print it and put it in the folder, so parents would have that QR code easy to access. So trying to do both, as well as we do have a subscription with the chamber, so we'll get all the chamber blast, we'll get all that population that might not get it through our family emails. And then really the representatives on the communication committee are really about outreach to the community because we'll, it's easy for us to hit students and families with emails and flyers and things like that. It's the community engagement we're looking for that people are really trying to brainstorm on.
Yep.
For the emails, this is a silly point, but we shouldn't, are we emailing the flyer or the link? Because you can't scan a QR code from your email.
It's the flyer. The flyer will be.
Open it up and you.
Right, if you're on your phone though, doing it. I would also provide a link.
Oh, yes, but it will have.
Both will be on the flyer.
I'm always like, I have a QR code.
No, no, no. It'll have the.
Okay. On my screen.
Yep. The flyer has the link and the QR code in the corner.
Thank you. Yeah. And it'll be little text, easy to do.
Great.
Just trying to reach as many people as we can.
Great.
Is it multilingual?
We do have, they can choose it. Yeah, that's through Qualtrics and there's, I don't know how many languages he said. Something like, I want to say 50 something, whatever. So they just check that and then they'll get the language of preference.
This is my error. I should've had Esther add this to the committee reports, but I wanted to bring the Wheel Right Trust back up again. Beth and Abby worked on a proposal for additional equipment for the playground that is going to go into construction in April down at Main Street School. And I did share it with you. Did anyone get it? I fully support this. I would make a motion right now. I just want to open it up for discussion. Does anyone have anything? I thought it was a really thoughtful proposal. It's very thorough and I think it makes a lot of sense to.
And timely before the.
Yeah. I just don't want to hold it up so when ordering starts, we're not the reason that anything's being held back.
I agree. I also really appreciated the inclusion of like that you have like involved students in the process that really, I just want to underscore that, that they had a voice in the process and even at some points, you know, talk informing sort of what pieces excited them. And I think it is something that will benefit the school community, but also the larger community and really makes sense for us to be doing at this point in the project.
So the total estimated amount was 22,516. So I'll make a motion and then we can still discuss it if anyone would like to, but I'd like to make a motion to, I don't guess, give 20, up to $23,000 of the Wheel Right Fund for the Main Street School Playground.
I second it.
I just wonder for those who might be listening and haven't seen it, if, I don't know if someone from, or we can just summarize briefly what was in there, just in case people are listening and they don't know what's included.
Right. Well, the, both playgrounds are being refit to be ADA compliant. And before the construction starts at Main Street, we missed the opportunity with Lincoln Street, but I know they're happy with their playground as it is right now. We're going to be adding, in addition to what the revised playground was initially, we're going to add an IDG full kitchen set and what?
At the EDP.
EDP. Oh, I'm sorry, at the EDP. I didn't see that. At the Development Preschool. And then at Main Street School, there will be a inclusive playground equipment for handicapped kids, premier park and play. It's a sensory roller table and also a spinami.
Nice job.
Which is spinning thing, I'm assuming. And yeah, so those are three additional.
It says the component for the kitchen, it says the components are purchased individually. So like, does it come with, I'm assuming like things that go in a kitchen?
That's the whole set. So it's not food. It's like, so the preschool's been wanting like a mud kitchen and actually that was something that was hoped for even before we were able to get the rubberized surface. It was a solution that we were thinking we could put on like a hard sort of grass surface area. Grass is very loose, but an area that we felt like would be really accessible to all kids and then offered as kind of like, the teachers are really excited about how to like integrate a lot of the skills that they're working on in their classrooms in this setting outside because of course, three, four and five-year-olds, you know, so much of what their play is as part of their learning. And it would be accessible, but it's like a kitchen sink and then like another, I mean, it's like many pieces that would be, the other thing we liked is it could be hard installed. So it wouldn't have the opportunity of being taped, like we've seen with some of our other, you know, even our story walk and just different things like that, like it can be prone to vandalism unfortunately, but these would be put in the ground.
Oh, nice.
It's pretty cool.
That's awesome.
But good catch, but that's all the pieces.
It's all the pieces.
Yeah.
Can I just ask one question about, like, what's so exciting is that we don't just add one piece and, you know, but is, I think at one point we talked about like, in an ideal world, if you could just do the whole thing over again, would this be it? Or do you foresee other pieces being added over time and then how?
Wow, that's a big question.
Big question.
I think, I mean.
You have shared money.
It's two schools. And three sites.
Three schools, three sites.
You said you were good with yours. I heard it. I mean, I think we're very happy with, with the way it's turning out. There are some, some pieces that were purchased kind of before many of us were a part of the preschool and they're still like in great shape and they're accessible for kids and, you know, I think those work really well. So I think we're, I think it's really cool. I can't promise that we won't ask for something.
Yeah, and I also just.
But my current best thinking is it's looking pretty good.
That's great. Because I know, you know, even when we were talking about the labyrinth, it was like, oh, we do this, but then that takes space, you know, just, it's like a, you know, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, right?
Yeah, they did say that we wouldn't be there like, because we had kind of looked at some other stuff and they're like, nope, you don't have room for that. Like you'd have to look at like some flatboard pieces and stuff. We were talking with the company over at the preschool. So there definitely like is a limit to what we're going to be able to put in. But it's, it's, it's cool. It's looking good. For our school, I feel like there's lots of things for kids to do. We've been keeping an eye out on stuff that is not really being used and that's where we would swap out a couple of pieces that are just like, it's not like there's kind of like this ladder to nowhere that nobody really uses. There's not that much to do. So like the spin, whatever the official name is, would be in that location and we would swap it out. So there still is space for mobility because once we have that rubberized surface, I'm super pleased. I think it's going to be great. I can't wait to see it though. Did I say, I don't know if I mentioned this, and if not, I think I did it at the DEIJ committee meeting, but I, we had a community member that moved here recently. It's their first year in town and they came from another area school and their first comment was about the communication boards and our desire for accessibility, that it was notable when they walked on our playgrounds. And that's just really cool, right? Made that family feel like they belonged here.
That's nice. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Just to, before we leave that topic, can I just also suggest that as we go into May and June and are looking at funds, that people, that you keep in mind what those things are. I mean, I think it's such, there's such an interface with the community beyond just our community of people that come to school here, of the, you know, Exeter community and family members that are visiting and whatnot. It really is a big impression for folks. And so keeping that, looking nice and looking, having things that are usable and whatnot is, I think it makes a big difference. And it's not a lot of money in the scheme of things, but it makes a big difference.
And then talking about the Wheel Right process moving forward, Patrick was the one that pointed out that we can use this money at any given point. I don't think projects just. And then talking about the Wheelright process moving forward, Patrick was the one that pointed out that we can use this money at any given point. I don't think projects just pop up. Not, I mean, you guys are so well-planned year to year, but we'll get into that maybe next year and we'll figure out what the process should look like in the fall. But it is something that should be thought of when things that are not anticipated do come up. I guess it's another place where we can go and we can always have those discussions because there's no, there's no deadline for this particular budget. And I think that's it. Do you have any old business, new business? Okay. All right. I am going to make a motion to end the meeting at 7:35. Second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have to roll call for that?